This June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five Wayne'sboro City Council meeting. Mr. Short, would you leave us in the pledge of allegiance?
The pleasure.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Short. If you wish to speak at any of the public hearings or citizen comment, there is a sign-up sheet in the back. Item two is adoption of the meeting agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion to adopt the meeting agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Sloane. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any discussion? All in favor of adopting the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it five-zero. Item three is matters from the mayor. I have a few things. On fourteen June, I gave the opening remarks for the Wayne'sboro NAACP Juneteenth Celebration at Ridgeview Park. On eighteen June, we had our first comprehensive plan public engagement, and it was a huge success. I think we had over eighty people that came out, and so we had lots of little sticky notes. And so the consultants are going through that and looking forward to seeing what was said. So it was a really good showing, and all our council folks were there. Vice Mayor Convy had a conflict. She had another appointment. But we kind of sat around and talked to the folks as they came in. And so I was real happy with our first event and the turnout. Then on twenty-one June, I gave another greetings on behalf of council in the city of Wayne'sboro at the Shenandoah Valley Juneteenth Celebration at Montgomery Hill Park in Stanton. As part of the May Business Appreciation Month, my visits, and I think Councilman Wood is still making some visits as well, I did visit the Wayne'sboro First State Crew on three June, and I failed to mention that at our last council meeting. And then tomorrow, I'll be visiting another business, McCutcheon's Journal Home. Then on twenty-five June, which is Wednesday, I have the honor of throwing out the first pitch for the Virginia eleven-year-old Kyle Ripken State Tournament, and that runs twenty-five to twenty-eight June, starting at nine AM to eight PM on twenty-five through twenty-seven June. And then the games on twenty-eight June will begin at four PM. So I hope you guys have an opportunity to get out and watch that state tournament. Real excited about that. And that's all I have. Item four is matters from the council.
Couple of things. Yep, no, I just want to commend Leslie and her staff and the folks for the open house, for the comp plan. I thought it was a great success. It was very well attended. The business appreciation visits, I visited with Councilman Sloane and Greg Hitchens. We went down to Smooth Athletics. I'm not sure if you all, if people realize that Smooth is a very successful screen printing and stitching place. They do Division One, Division Two, Division Three colleges from all over the country. They do all the uniforms for Virginia Tech, UVA, JMU. I've seen stuff in there from Rutgers, from Stanford, from all over the country. And this company, the folks who own it live in Wayne'sboro, moved their business from out of the county back into the city, which was a big expense and a big investment in our city. So I was very pleased to go down and hang out with them and see their facilities. Me and Jeremy both were. And tomorrow, I think it is, we're going down to Fine Concrete to visit their establishment, to let them know how much we appreciate them having their business here in our lovely city. And last but not least, I think the announcement was made earlier. I want to say congratulations to Nathan Bain, who is the new head coach of Wayne'sboro High School Football. So very pleased to hear that. I bet you, actually, the smile on Dr. Castle's face, he's pleased as well. I can tell. And that's all I got.
Anybody else?
Jeremy, go.
No, you're good.
Okay. On June thirteenth, along with those visits, I actually went to visit Industrial Machine Works, which is Jeremy's place of employment. And I purposely picked that, not because Jeremy works there per se, but because I like metal. And so I was very, very fascinated by everything that I saw during the visit. It was really right up my alley. And so I really like all the innovation that those guys are doing. And so thanks to Greg Hitchens for inviting me to participate in the visits. And thank the guys for welcoming us as well. So, thank you.
And just to add on to that, we thoroughly enjoyed having Vice Mayor Convy come through. She got the A-one treatment, and everybody was impressed with just your enthusiasm and your energy level. So that was nice. It was a very good walk-through at Smooth Athletics. Super impressed with the facility. Really clean. Everybody enjoys working there. She's proud to be a part of the community and support Wayne'sboro. She has for years prior to moving here on our planning commission. And looks forward to a long time into the future carrying on business. And I look forward to visiting with, hopefully, the concrete place, Valley Concrete, tomorrow. And also Wednesday, United Servo, another local business over in War Day. So I look forward to seeing all their capabilities. Personally, we do work in tandem with them, Industrial Machine Works. But I look forward to seeing just how deeply involved in the community they are. So I appreciate it. Greg isn't here, but thanks for all the work he's putting in.
I would just add a little bit to the mayor's comments and hope that he stretches thoroughly before the first pitch tomorrow. That'd be helpful. And we wanted to share that this year, while I, with other work commitments and stuff, I've had to step off of the chair for the Virginia Municipal League's Legislative Committee. I was asked to stay on as a member. So we have our first conversation tomorrow, already prepping up for the General Assembly session with some hot topics that I'll relay back once we've had the discussion. But our focus principally on, in terms of policy and budget studies, will be housing studies and housing incentives program, and through the state and federal government. K through twelve education funding issues is also something near and dear to my heart. We'll talk about House Bill seventeen forty-three, which is at our last session, B-Pole, the Out-of-State Deduction Expansion Work Group, some FOIA updates, and then collective bargaining and right-to-work laws, which I know is also something of keen interest to Dr. Castle. Water Quality Improvement Fund Studies, and then the topic of cannabis, which comes up every single year. So that'll be, they always, fortunately, that would make that the last piece of the meeting. But looking forward to serving in that capacity and the like.
Thank you. Item five on the agenda is consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Shall move.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Is there a second?
What second?
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it five-zero. Item six is to consider adopting an ordinance amending Chapter ninety-eight, Article Four, Section six dot seven and four dot ten pertaining to the orientation of bay and service doors and overlay corridors. Mr. Ham.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council, you're likely aware that this is a holdover item from previous meetings. The proposed amendments were the subject of a public hearing. And as the council was considering the proposed amendments, directed staff to develop some specific criteria or a checklist that would serve, as we understood, as a basis for evaluation and consideration of future applications regarding orientation of bay and service doors. If those, that series of criteria have been furnished in this meeting packet, and my observation and recommendation to council would be that if the council does not find the draft criteria satisfactory, if that doesn't do an adequate job of furnishing preferred structure and sort of ringing out objectivity or subjectivity in the process, then I think the best course of action and the recommended course of action would be simply to vote the ordinance down. And then the ordinance would, our code would remain as it is today and require, it's very specific regarding requirements for the bay doors. So unless there are other questions, politely remind you that the ordinance has been introduced, seconded, and properly discussed, been the subject of a public hearing, and so you can vote at this point. Ms. Tate is here to answer any technical questions that you may have.
Okay. So do we have any additional questions? I'll call the question. All in favor of the ordinance amending City Code, Chapter ninety-eight, Article Four, Section four dot ten and six dot seven, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, opposed, I have four-one. Item seven is to hold a public hearing on the draft twenty-twenty-five Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan for the city's entitlement funds. Ms. Tate, Director of Community Development.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. This evening, we do need to hold a public hearing on the draft twenty-twenty-five Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. So an overview of the CDBG program, it was established in nineteen seventy-four by the Housing and Community Development Act. It's administered by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The purpose of the funding is to meet priority housing and community development needs of low to moderate income persons. CDBG is the single most flexible funding source and can be used for a variety of eligible projects. We completed our five-year consolidated planning process in last summer, wrapped that up. And so that kind of sets the roadmap for the next five years of the program, identifying what each annual action plan or what each year's designated funds would be used for. So the goals that came out of our consolidated plan was to improve access to and the quality of housing, provide public services, improve public facilities and infrastructure, and then also planning and administration if we were to ever use funds for that category. As you're aware, there's a lot of different eligible activities under the program, housing rehab, homeownership assistance, acquisition or disposition of real property, public facility improvements, among many others. So all CDBG-funded activities need to meet one of three national objectives. So they need to benefit low to moderate income persons, which is at least seventy percent of the grant amount. Can also be utilized to prevent or eliminate blight, although that is capped at no more than thirty percent of your grant amount. And then another way that it can qualify is if it meets an urgent health need, where health or welfare is threatened, and that often comes into play in times of natural disasters. So over the past several years, our amount of community development block grant funds has been slowly or minimally decreasing. It is based on kind of a federal formula, so we really have no control over that amount that we receive. So this year, it was announced that our twenty-twenty-five funding award is a hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars. I will share with you all and with the public that this amount of funds, relatively small amount of funds, is difficult to administer through the federal program. There's a lot of federal requirements that come into play. And so it's often hard to get those funds out the door within a one-year timeframe if you're having to plan a project, design, engineer a project, bid and construct the project. You're really not able to get that done within a one-year timeframe. And we've struggled in the past when we've chosen projects that we've had to do all of those things. So this year, staff is recommending that we use the a hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars on a Wayne'sboro pedestrian mobility improvements. So funds would be used to design and engineer sidewalk and pedestrian safety projects that are in community development block grant eligible areas. So it'll include pedestrian improvements at multiple intersections. That estimated benefit is just a number that HUD requires us to put into the annual action plan, and it's really just looking at all of the census tracts where these intersection improvements would take place and the populations of those areas, and just providing an estimated benefit. So this is the map that shows all of the various locations where the design and engineering work would be completed. And as you note, they're all in the kind of darker yellow shading represents low to moderate income areas. So those areas that have greater than fifty-one percent, that's low to moderate income. And so I did just want to note kind of a reason for choosing this project. So certainly, it is easy to administer in that we can work with our on-call transportation consultants who will design the different intersection improvements. We also have over eight hundred thousand dollars that's been awarded through the Virginia Highway Safety Improvement Program to do the construction of these different intersections. But that amount was too low to do the engineering and design work. So we were either going to have to kind of significantly cut down on the number of intersections we could do or find that design-engineering work from some other place. And so when we kind of matched up those different locations and our LMI areas, recognize that really, other than maybe three that are outside where we won't be using these funds for, the majority of those intersection locations were in low to moderate income areas. So this is up for a public hearing this evening, the draft annual action plan. It was in your packets. It's on display in various different locations throughout the city. There is a thirty-day public comment period, and we are required to hold a public hearing during that thirty-day timeframe. And then the July tenth would be the end of our thirty-day public comment period. July fourteenth is when we'll ask council to review and approve the draft plan. August fifteenth is our deadline to submit the plan to HUD in preparation to have the funds available October first. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Are the improvements to those intersections going to be along the same lines as what we did at Fourth Street?
Yeah, so there will be, it'll be ADA curb ramp upgrades. Anywhere where there's not receiving sidewalk sections, so there might be some of those pedestrian crossings. And they vary. So some of the locations require some signal modifications. Some are more simple. But yes, they would be kind of full ADA compliant pedestrian accommodations. Thank you.
I hereby open the public hearing.
So no one has signed up to speak, sir.
I hereby close the public hearing. No actions required at this meeting. Council will consider approving the annual action plan at July fourteenth meeting. Item eight is to hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget in the amount of eight million, five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy to fund the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six capital improvement plan. Mr. Ham.
Yes, sir. Counsel, hopefully, will recall that we provided an extensive review of the CIP for fiscal twenty-six during the budget process. This evening, we simply need to hold the public hearing. I furnished a summary review at the previous regular business meeting. So unless there are questions, we can proceed to the public hearing.
I hereby open the public hearing.
No one has signed up to speak, sir.
I hereby close the public hearing. This ordinance was properly introduced at the previous meeting. Unless there's additional discussion, I'll call the question. All in favor of the ordinance amending the budget and funding the FY twenty-twenty-six CIP, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it five-zero. Item nine is to hold a public hearing and consider introducing an ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six budget in the amount of fifty-seven million for the Wayne'sboro High School capital project. Mr. Ham.
Yes, sir. I have one additional item or comment on the previous item. Mr. McCormick will distribute or circulate the multi-year CIP. So those years, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty, he'll send those out by email in the next week or so. And then later in July, council will have the opportunity to confirm those for inclusion in the budget. Technically, the council only adopts the fiscal twenty-six CIP, but we certainly use those ensuing years as a guide. And so we want to continue that information exchange and get confirmation before we conclude work on the budget document. Regarding the high school project, I think this, we provided an update on this at the previous meeting. Just by way of reminder, no additional appropriation for the project will be required after this evening's appropriation, assuming the council approves as much, unless the project were to come in over budget, which we do not anticipate happening. All kidding aside, we're good to go on the project for appropriation, provided we stay within the stated project budget at this point. We would anticipate the borrowing to occur in the third quarter of this fiscal year. That'd be January, February, or March timeframe. That borrowing would have to be approved by four-fifths of council. That's called a supermajority. This evening, obviously, we don't have the full fifty-seven million in cash to appropriate, but this ordinance is appropriating cash-flowing some of the current ongoing engineering and design work needed to get us to the point where we get the school system to the point of bidding the project.
Any questions, sir? Staff? I hereby open the public hearing.
No one has signed up to speak, sir.
I hereby close the public hearing. The ordinance was properly introduced at the previous meeting. Unless there's additional discussion, I'll call the question. All in favor of the ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six budget in the amount of fifty-seven million dollars for the Wayne'sboro High School project, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it five-zero.
Thank you. Sorry, thank you.
Yes, sir. Item ten is the second consideration of an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to the Life Works Project to allow a food pantry at five zero five North Winchester Avenue. So as I've done in the past, because I serve on the Board of Trustees and at the church itself and the property, I will recuse myself from discussion and voting on this. Ms. Tate.
So this item, we held a public hearing at your meeting, or your last meeting, and the ordinance was introduced. But I will briefly recap the request. So conditional use permits are really kind of to take a closer look at a use that may or may not be compatible with the other uses that are allowed by right in any given area. And so in order to approve the conditional use permit, you must find that it's consistent with good zoning practice and would not be adverse to health, safety, or comfort of persons living or working in the area or detrimental economically or otherwise to various improvements within the district. So the request is to operate a food pantry in the RG five general residential district. It's located at five oh five North Winchester. The property is owned by the church across the street, and the building is being used currently by the Life Works Project for the River City Bread Basket. You can see the yellow color is representative of the RG five or general residential zoning. There's also a mix of zoning within the area. There are some industrial uses, some various different types of residential density. So it's really a mixture within that area. So the bread basket opened in late twenty twenty-three, and they serve approximately five hundred households a month. The Life Works Project is considering purchasing the property from the church. So it's not associated with the church. It would be a standalone use. And so that's why staff has recommended that they get a conditional use permit, which food pantries are allowed in general residential with that conditional use permit. The comprehensive plan designates the area as medium-density residential. But like I noted, the broader area has really been a mix of residential, commercial, and industrial uses. Use of the property as a food pantry would not be inconsistent with the mixture of uses within the area. Life Works did note that they do have limited operating hours, kind of limiting the amount of traffic to the area. You can see they have hours on Thursdays and Fridays. Staff did kind of evaluate, and there's plenty of on-street and off-street parking. Life Works did mention that they would like to maybe pursue an addition on the property in the future. And so if something like that is pursued, then staff would be evaluating the parking requirements, and they would be reevaluated during that site plan review, just as any other use in that zoning. So staff does recommend approval. I did want to note that the ordinance included in your packets does include a condition that the conditional use permit be issued to Life Works and their business entity, and that the permit would expire upon such time that it would transfer to any other entity. And so that really allows the ability for, if things change over time, if somebody else wants to operate a food pantry there, it would be kind of another time to come back before the council and reevaluate. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I just want to say I've received more emails and calls on this particular issue than about anything I've had in the last two and a half years I've been here. And if I've read the room right, I think it was, even though I appreciate the input, it's a no-brainer. They fill such a void in our community and do such a good job for our community. It seems like it's just a, it's a no-brainer.
This ordinance was properly introduced at the previous meeting. Unless there's additional discussion, I'll call the question. All in favor of the ordinance granting the conditional use permit to the Life Works Project for a food pantry at five zero five North Winchester, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it.
I wonder, Governor Mayor, I just want to clarify that the motion is subject to the condition, as pointed out by Ms. Tate, that it's, the CUP is granted to Life Works solely, and it is non-transferable.
Okay.
So who introduced the original motion? Do we need a friendly amendment?
Yes.
I don't know who introduced. Did I introduce the?
I think, I think Councilman Sloane asked about.
Oh, it's in the minutes. I asked about that, but I didn't introduce. I don't know that I introduced the original.
It'll be in here. So I made the motion. I would like to offer a friendly amendment to engross the provision limiting the transferability of the permit to the Life Works Project.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Thank you, Mr. Wood. With the proposed amendment to the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it four-zero-one extension. Thank you, Ms. Michelson. Okay, item eleven. Is to consider reappointing Greg Hitchens, Director of Economic Development and Tourism, to the Board of Directors for the Shenandoah Partnership. The term is three years, concluding on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. Mr. Ham.
Yes, sir. So Mr. Hitchens currently represents the city as a locality appointment on that Board of Directors. The Board of Directors is a blend of locality appointments and private sector, non-locality appointments, many of which are from the business industry, some of which are in higher education, et cetera. Partnership does a variety of things to promote economic development in the region, and its catchment area extends north to Shenandoah County and south to Rockbridge County and includes the five independent cities therein as well. But the key function of the partnership is that, with very, very few exceptions, our work with the state must coordinate and interface with a regional agency, that we cannot work with prospects independently from the state and separate from the region. So it's a pretty important element of our economic development program and strategy, and I would recommend the council reappoint Mr. Hitchens for a three-year term.
Thank you, Mr. Ham. Are there any questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Convy. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it five-zero. Item twelve, citizen comment.
No one has signed up to speak. No one has signed up to speak, sir.
Thank you. Item thirteen, communication correspondence calendar. Mr. Ham.
I don't have anything this evening.
Item fourteen, is there a motion to adjourn?
Subdue.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Conby. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.